I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the School District of Waukesha Regular Board Meeting for Wednesday, July 13th, Just a second in the room here, we have a pretty significant echo. I'm sorry to the people in the room across the hall. Give it a second. Okay. All right, we'll try that again. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is a School District of Waukesha Regular Board Meeting for Wednesday, July 13th, 2022. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mrs. Ettinger, would you kindly take the roll call?
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Keri Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Robertson.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. Mr. Como is excused this evening. Thank you, Sue. Can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. I'm excited that we do have bright lights tonight. We have with us Mrs. Jenny Lambert from the Saratoga STEM Academy and some students to speak to us about the GE Girls' STEM Summer Camp. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jenny Lambert. I am very proud and happy to be here for the long history that we have with GE Girls. I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of our partnership with GE. And then I brought some fellow GE campers, GE representatives, parents, and then they're going to share a little bit about their experience, too. So I'm going to go back to 2011. In 2011, GE realized that there's a huge need for girls in STEM fields. And in 2011, they decided that we're going to start a camp. And so they started their first camp at MIT. And that camp was very successful. And the following year, they said, we're going to start another camp. And they started another camp in Waukesha. So we were very fortunate to be able to be the second camp. With that, we partnered up with MSOE. And MSOE has been a great partner with us, where our girls then go to MSOE for the week. They do STEM activities with professors and GE women. And it's a full week of camp where GE provides all the funding for our girls. So the first year, we had 26 girls. The following year, we opened up the camp for other schools. So we wanted MPS, and we did Sherwood, and also the School District of Waukesha. So I'm going to present Heidi from GE, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about the camp and what it entails.
Hey, thanks for having us. Apologies, I have a little bit of a cough, so I didn't want to not wear that. But just to give you some background, so we bring the girls for about a week. So it is all day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The last couple of years have been tough. We had a completely virtual session two years ago, and we had a partial virtual session last year. It was great this year to reintroduce a full in-person week and to do -- we actually have evolved the content as well. So we started off doing things like coding. Now coding is almost obsolete. The girls can usually teach us how to code. So now we're teaching them things like AI. We actually did a transmissible disease exercise the year before COVID. So we try to stay on the cutting edge of kind of what they might need to know about and get them familiar. A lot of it is just really about building their confidence, building their familiarity with terms, so that, you know, they're kind of not afraid to fail or try, or when they hear stuff again, it's great. And then after that week is done, we actually transition to an alumni program. So they get to come back every year for a whole-day camp and usually do like a deep dive in a problem-solving, product development, or -- and this year was an AI camp, a full-day camp. And they have virtual sessions, things like, what classes should I take in high school? What majors am I interested in? And we also offer a scholarship. So we kind of try to stay with the girls as they kind of go through school and track them and see where they land. But really, it's about exposure, excitement, the social aspect of it, which actually really is so great when we get the in-person camp back. And we're just really proud to be a partner with MSOE and Waukesha Schools.
Ready? Sure she is.
My name is Sophia Monfrie. I'm in sixth grade, and I go to Les Paul Middle School. One of the things I found a lot of fun at the camp was probably all the hands-on activities that we did. So like, we did lung models, we did coding. We did, earlier in the week, I think it was the first or second day, we made 3D prints. And then later in the week, on Friday, we did an ultrasound through those 3D prints. We took our ultras -- we took them, and we put them in water, and then looked at what they looked like under the water. And then they also mixed up the activities. It was never like a thing that we did every single day of the week. It's like, we didn't do like just lungs that week. We learned a lot of new stuff every single day, which was really, really fun. I made a -- for the 3D models we did, this is the one that I had made, but it was, we each -- each kid, each person got like 10 or 15 minutes to design their own model. And we were allowed to use anything our minds could come up with. So then I came up with this, and I finally figured out a rolling question I had had about how to add text into my 3D prints.
Hi, my name is Olivia. I go to STEM Saratoga Middle School, and I'm going into seventh grade. So one of the things that I was asked to talk about is an activity that I found fun. And so I found our circuit board activity fun, because I learned a lot about electricity and batteries. I got to work with my hands. I got to make something that I could bring home. And I can -- I had an opportunity to make a circuit board that was my own design. And then I still had a lot of fun doing it, because I could work with my friends. And so I brought like a model of one of the things I made, and it kind of lights up. It's kind of glitchy, but does light up. And then one of the other things that I just talked about is what I liked about this LED sign -- yeah, we soldered, that says GE for girls on it. And I liked that I got to work with my hands, and I got to learn how to solder. And then something I struggled with was, the first time I put the lights in and like wired them all together to light them up, they didn't work. So then I had to switch them all out, and I was running out of time, but I got it done. And now it actually does light up, and it does work. So I really liked learning how to solder, too. Thank you.
My name is Sammy. I'm going -- I'm going into seventh grade, and I go to Waukesha STEM Saratoga. So I really enjoyed the robotics part of it. So we had these Lego robots that we got to code and tell them like what to do. So there's a tape maze on the table, and we put into code and then downloaded it into the robot. And me and my partner, we made our robot like spin like five times before it would actually turn and continue going. I also enjoyed the 3D printing part, because I got to make my own design. So I made mountains. And then I had a little guy on here, but he broke off sadly. And then we also got to solder, and I enjoy soldering, because it's fun, I guess. So it lights up, like Olivia said before. And mine looks like this. So thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Caitlin Haas, and I'm a student at Waukesha North High School. I was first introduced to the GE Girls' Program when I was in seventh grade. I first attended as a camper, and I was able to return this year through the alumni program. As a camper, I remember learning how to 3D print, solder, and so much more. We were able to engage in a variety of different activities that first sparked my interest in STEM. This year, I was presented with the opportunity to return as alumni, and I immediately knew that I wanted to do it. Every year, there's a basic theme for the camp, and this year, we dove into artificial intelligence. Over the course of the alumni camp, I was able to meet with many different virtual panelists to learn more about AI. Not only did they teach us about this field, but they gave us advice for classes we should take in high school and how to apply for college, jobs, and internships in the future. Some of the people we were able to talk to were interns at GE as well as a student from MIT. And then we were able to take part in some activities at MSOE. For example, one thing we were able to do was detect PTX in lung scans and compare to detections made by AI software. We were also able to try CT bone segmentation and compare that to AI software as well. I enjoyed these activities and liked being able to apply the AI technology that we were learning about to real-world scenarios. One thing I really like about the GE Girls' Program is how much it applies to all of our lives. So obviously, GE has a focus on healthcare, but we learned about all different variations of STEM and how we can apply it to many different careers. Personally, I've been considering going into data science, so I really enjoyed the incorporation of AI this year. Thank you, guys, so much for investing in our future and this opportunity today and your time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Monfrie. I'm the parent of Sophia. You've already heard the most compelling testimony from the girls themselves, but I appreciate you allowing me to give a parent's perspective on this program. I was thrilled to see this come through and jumped at the opportunity to get Sophia involved. She's always showed an interest in science. And to be able to give her access to women that have successfully achieved careers in these different fields, to see all stages of their careers. There were people there that were very young and just beginning and starting out with GE. There were others that achieved high levels of leadership. And for our young women to be able to see those role models, interact with them, talk to them, have access to them, and then see them put the skills that these women talked about to use. Hands-on activities, the ability to network amongst themselves. One of the best things about volunteering and being there and watching this was watching these girls' confidence grow over the week. They started answering more questions, raising their hands, trying different things. Hey, if we do this, what happens then? It was just amazing to watch. And it's something that, as much as our school district has wonderful programs, partnerships like this enhance our students' ability to learn and to consider these as real careers. So thank you for supporting it. Thank you for allowing the girls to participate. And did anyone have any questions you'd like to ask of me or anyone else you've heard from?
I'm sure that we do. Any questions or comments? Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. Wonderful program. Thank you for coming to speak today. It's just a great thing. I have two daughters myself, so this is a great program. I'm just extremely curious. I know I'm putting you on the spot if any of you, I know you're at different stages in your education, thought about what fields you may want to go into. I know the last speaker spoke of that. Any curious? Anybody want to offer? It's okay. But thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Come on up.
My dad works at GE. And like, I used to think that seemed kind of boring, like I didn't want to do that. But after this camp, I kind of opened my eyes, and I feel like that's more interesting, and I could like learn about that.
Okay. Very good.
So my dad works actually in the healthcare, and then my mom works at Landright Credit Union for helping with humans, with helping with the hu -- to like, as a human resource person. So it's like, seeing how my dad learned, like, seeing what it looks like from the point of view of the people who make this, and not only from my dad's point of view, was actually a lot more interesting than I had thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be almost as boring as like a business job, where you're just sitting in an office all day, when it ended up being more of a engineering aspect of it, when I thought that all healthcare was about was just saving others' lives in the process of having fun in science. So like, seeing this, it made me want to become more interested in GE healthcare, but not only that, but then also it opened my horizons of becoming like a tech, like a technology teacher at like MIT or at Les Paul, where we have the opportunity to learn this stuff our first year in sixth grade. This could help more kids become more interested in STEM, which is also why I would think that if we had wanted to do this, like more open and help more students become open into the STEM categories earlier. I understand we have the STEM program, but then there are so many kids that in the school district, because we have so many schools, there are so many kids that don't have this opportunity with the STEM program. We could open it up to like fifth graders who are going into their first year of middle school.
Excellent. Yeah. Chase your dreams. Don't give up.
Anyone else? Well, I can't help myself. I actually have my GE Girls' pen here with me tonight. Seeing Mrs. Lambert and I met in 2011, I was an executive at GE when we had the vision to start this program. And it was, it's so amazing that we have her still involved in this program. Heidi and I were in graduate school together a long time ago, and it's a surprise to see her here tonight. All of you girls, you know, the motivation behind this program was, middle school is a time where you start to think about what you want to do when you grow up. And sometimes we make decisions that, oh, I don't like math, or I don't like science. But think about those little moments where you got that circuit to turn on, or you got, you know, you got the 3D print to work out the way you wanted it to. And sometimes you have to try and try and try. But it's those tiny little moments that tell you that you actually can. And I think, again, that's really why we do these kinds of things. And I know that teachers like Mrs. Lambert and our STEM Academy are such an incredible resource, and we have tremendous success with that program. This also gives us the opportunity to bring it to so many more. So, and incredible thanks to GE, who has continued to fund this program for many, many years at no cost to our students. So it's really excellent.
And I know there's going to be some other announcements about the healthcare spinoffs, so I want to assure you that we've already established that this program will continue. So there's probably some, I think there's, I'm hearing there's going to be some announcement on Monday about our new name, as we spin healthcare off from GE, but GE Girls is staying, so.
Heidi, not to put you on the spot, but do you know, I know this program has grown to many, many sites, some international sites. Do you have a sense for how many girls the GE Girls' Program is serving now?
We're definitely in the thousands. With the reset virtually, but we had some international camps, I think, three years ago. So 2019 was our last full camp. I think we had 26 camps, of which a few of them, you know, were Mexico and Europe, but mostly still US-based. And each camp, like us, serves maybe about 50 girls every single year, so.
That's exciting. Well, you girls are part of something special, and students like Caitlin, who come back to be alumni representatives, really mean a lot to the program, too. So kudos to all of you.
And this is our 10-year anniversary with this camp, so it's pretty cool to see some of the girls actually in college and moving. It's amazing, the groundwork that was laid, right?
Have any come back to work at GE yet? We should be through a couple of cycles. Not yet? Okay.
I think we're getting close to Edison. So some Edison is going to be a GE Girl graduate, so.
It's exciting.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for having us in, and we will leave you to your business.
Thank you all very much. Okay. So we don't have recognitions or student representatives tonight, so we'll move on to the portion of our meeting for our citizen speakers. We have six speakers tonight, which means each speaker will have up to five minutes to complete their comments. You'll be notified at three minutes. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with any verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium will be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. Our first speaker tonight will be Becky Gilligan.
Hello. So last April, three of you ran campaigns focusing on misrepresented testing data and claimed these district teachers are failing their students, leading to poor test scores. At each board meeting, at least one person speaks about CRT and other conspiracies teachers are supposedly hiding from parents. One person even insinuated that the librarians are pedophiles pushing pornographic books. Instead of standing behind and defending the abilities of their teachers and calling out how inappropriate it is to call staff pedophiles, the administration has said nothing. Instead of making sure the conspiracy nuts understand teachers are not hiding anything and parents can simply log into Infinite Campus, obtain their child's blackboard login, and view all the lessons in the class syllabuses, you allow misinformation to spread like a disease. Do you wonder why so many teachers have resigned or retired? Losing so many experienced teachers will lead to poor test scores. I watched a documentary on past dictators and why many citizens of their countries were loyal to these terrible men. Briefly, leaders cranked out massive amounts of pro-regime propaganda, targeting those without higher education, and it demonized everything and everyone who would question the government, while simultaneously terrorizing teachers, professors, scientists, and other educated citizens who are more likely to question the propaganda. Obviously, these are extreme examples, and occurred over several decades, but the parallels to our political calamity are there. Propaganda meant to amplify the fears many Americans feel, the fear of those different than themselves, the fear of changing society norms, fear of change in general, have led to conspiracy theories and unchecked spread of misinformation. Now our teachers are demonized as radicals that indoctrinate their students, and the administration does nothing to impede the spread of these lies. Dr. Siegert, what side of history are you on? Who controls the past controls the future? Who controls the present controls the past? From George Orwell's book, 1984. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Reese, followed by Mike Walsh.
Good evening. Last night, I actually, I misspoke. I said shuffle the deck chairs on the Titanic, I meant rearrange the deck chairs on the Titanic. But that seems to be less of a problem as of today, seeing as how a whole bunch of them jumped overboard. Dum dum. Kudos to the teachers, who are good teachers, who stayed here and are going to remain. I have a sister-in-law who's a teacher, and this is something that she finds very embarrassing when things like this happen, that teachers take political stances in the classrooms and try to manipulate children. And kudos to those who are good, who really want to and are engaged in teaching and who aren't going to run as soon as you say, you can't try to turn my child into a dead-ender. That, those, as soon as they're told they can't do something, they have to run, because they're not interested in teaching. That is not their priority, is helping kids, not all kids. They don't care what I believe. They think what I believe is like what was said, is propaganda. It is not. It is what I believe and is what I know. Also, this is a problem. The way these teachers hold us hostage and try to manipulate the board and try to degrade parents is, we need a voucher system. This board needs to back a voucher system. It needs to go get behind, write a letter to all of our elected officials that we support a voucher, money that follows the student, so they cannot hold us hostage like they did during COVID, so they cannot refuse to do their job. If they want to do that, to them. We'll go find something where else to go. I have no problem with what they believe. I just don't want to be held hostage to their beliefs. Also, we had a, there was a workshop that this board did a couple of weeks ago. I want to address something else that happened in there. The lawyers that we have representing us, I find, I have no time for them. I really can't stand what they have to say. When they want to sit and lecture the board and tell the board that, you're here to represent all the kids, you're all, all, where were you two years ago? Well, now, a bunch of parents wanted to come back here, wanted their kids in school, and didn't want them having half-days and being manipulated whether or not they were going to be in school, whether or not they were going to be taught. Where were they then? There is nothing, no call for this. They didn't care what we had to say. And I'm just sick of hearing that, and those lawyers lecture this board. And then they talk about this open portion, this open podium portion of the meeting. And they leave out what Lynn Edelman said just a couple of years ago. They totally ignore what a federal judge said about this, that this is my time, this is our time, the community's time, whether or not we agree with each other or whatever, but this is our time. You don't get to dictate that to me. This is mine. Whether or not I'm respectful or not, that's mine. You can denounce whatever I say. You don't have to support anything I say, but this is my time. And I am sick of those lawyers sitting there talking in circles about this like you're a bunch of children and don't understand what this is about. I have the right to do this. You have the right to limit some things on me. I cannot interrupt this meeting. Lynn Edelman stated that. I cannot do certain things. But as far as when you set a timer, that timer belongs to me and no one else. And if you give me this opportunity, which you do, then it's my time. And I just, I despise those lawyers and the way they talk about this. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Next is Mike Walsh, followed by Stacy Keen.
Hi, everyone. Mike Walsh. First of all, I mean, based on having the freedom to speak, I actually believe we should free Dave Richman back to the meetings here. The, I don't agree with what he says, but I agree with the fact that he should have the right to say it, and if you guys could set rules on how we could say it. But anyway, I believe that he should be allowed back here. The reason I'm here tonight is that I'm here for TIFs. And it's not TIFs between little fights, it's actually tax incremental finance. So the school board has the option to stop TIFs at the city of Waukesha. The city of Waukesha, and this is something that all the parents for school board, kids in the school district should actually be supportive of, regardless of what side you're on. And I know the people sitting at home for the Alliance and United groups should be following and following along and saying that this is something that the school board should actually get on board with. So we need to stop allowing the TIFs in the city of Waukesha. The city of Waukesha has taken advantage of the school board, the school district, and it is actually stripping funding for students. Okay? So kids, if a TIF gets, if you look at the city of Waukesha, I guess, if you follow the Water Compact, we are landlocked in the city of Waukesha. No more land can be stolen from the town. Okay? So we can only build within our limits here. So the government in the City Hall, $30 million City Hall that we're all funding, okay, they love to give handouts to builders. So right now, there's a proposal for a $3 million TIF for the Burges to build an apartment building next to City Hall. $3 million of taxpayer funding. So what happens is, is that the amount of taxes that the school district gets is frozen for approximately 25 years. That's two generations of kids. Two generations of kids and a full, you know, tenure of a teacher. That's it. Frozen. If you look at, and actually look into tax incremental financing and TIDS that are, that the city has actually been, and they've been going nuts with it for about eight, nine years, okay? Every builder comes forward, because they know that the city wants to propose it. And the previous school board, you know, allowed it to get through, because I got to tell you, they're like timeshare salesmen when they're bringing this stuff forward. They tell you this great thing, we're going to make the property worth, you know, $20 million, $30 million, and we're going to, we're going to get the increment. It's 25 and 30 years down the road, okay? All they got to do is build a smaller project or just tell the builder to fund it themselves. But then they'll say, but let's, this is how they do it. They go, it's a, but if for this TIF, would we build it? Well, all they got to do is say no. Right? That's actually a loophole in there. If but for, we can't do it without the If but for, "We can't do it without this, without the $3 million bucks." "Oh, okay, then I guess we got to give you the $3 million bucks." Then we're locked out with the students. We're talking about student funding, food, education, teachers. It's got to stop. So, you know, the residential ones, it's a $3 million taxpayer giveaway to put up a $12 million apartment for $1,502,000 rents-
Two minutes.
-for one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments. These are not school district-used apartments. These are not family apartments, okay? These are, you know, yuppies. Are they paying taxes? You know, sometimes I hear that renters aren't paying taxes. Renters are paying taxes. The difference is, is when it's actually taxpayer-funded to build the project, then they're really not, right? These are the loopholes. Again, it's like a timeshare. It's a big sales process. We're getting screwed at the school level, so as the board, and I would hope everybody in the community would support this, we got to say no more. The city will build when the city builds, okay? The properties will go up in value when the properties go up in value, but there is no reason that every project should no longer allow the school district to collect extra funds over 25 and 30 years. Again, two generations of students and a full tenure of a teacher's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Keen, followed by Kathy McBride.
I'm going to read a quote here. For some parents that are really, really wanting to be protective of their kid and in a way have them in a bubble, I always kind of say, like, "They don't have to go into the library." Jody Landish last night at the TNL meeting. I could not even believe what I heard. In a bubble? You think books we are talking about are about keeping kids in a bubble? You insulted parents last night. Are you saying that this bubble protects them from porn in the libraries? And anything outside of that means the library is not a safe space to send our kids. We should just keep them out. Libraries should be a safe place with age-appropriate material. You made it very clear what you are, what you think of parents not wanting their kids to read books that are R and X-rated. However, the district did not do their jobs, and parents should be getting an apology for putting those books in our libraries, not insulted, and an apology for that comment last night. Thank you, Kelly and Anthony, for trying to make that clear last night. I'm one of those parents, so I took that very personally. I don't keep my kids in a bubble. My kids travel. They see the world. They go on mission trips. They are not in a bubble. And if you want to show kids porn, that, or let them read porn, that's on you, not in my library, that my tax dollars pay for. Now, about the notification last, there was a discussion last night about the notification. I want to make sure, I wasn't sure if Mr. Zenobia understood what these notifications look like. It does not tell the parent what the book is about, that it could be not appropriate. All it does, it's an email that you get around midnight the day the book is checked out. So the kid has the book all day long. You get an email overnight saying, "Your child has checked out this book." There's no warning, and for parents who are not involved and that still think that there's, the libraries are a safe space, but apparently not, because they could just stay out, this needs to be fixed, and I want to make sure the board understands what that notification is. It's not sufficient, and it's not what we were promised almost a year ago. So-
Two minutes.
That's, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight until I watched the TNL meeting today, so thank you for your time, and I think the parents need an apology.
Thank you. Kathy McBride, followed by Gabriel McBride.
Good evening, school board members and superintendents. My name is Kathy McBride, and I am the mother of two children within Waukesha schools. I am also, this past school year was my first year in the school district as well as my kids. I am reaching out to you to let you know about a very important issue that is affecting our schools, that many parents have been complaining to you about, and the current administration, the current administration insists on ignoring the complaints. It hurt my feelings to say that because I really am team teacher, team administration, but at the same time, if you all cannot keep our kids safe, we are going to replace you. And that's what I'm here to let you know today. This issue is responsible for more missed days in schools. It's also responsible for more missed days, even when you group all of the sicknesses and viruses that we have throughout the year, bullying is the issue that I am talking about. Our kids right now, I have been holding sessions on a weekly basis with kids within your school district that are telling me that they are already afraid to go into school the first day. And in my opinion, if a child is already afraid to go to school the very first day, the school has failed, the administration has failed, the superintendent has failed. Don't even look at the parents because we do the best that we can. No parent in 2022 should have to second-guess dropping off their child at school. No parent should have to take a leave of absence to ensure that her son's safety is going to be at the head front of this September 1st for the first day of school, so I'm letting you know. Effective today, we are already taking steps to have you removed, because if you've been here all this time, over 10 years or better, and you've chosen not to pay attention to the bullying issue, and I have seen the emails that have been sent to some of the members that are sitting here today. I've seen, Mr. Cook is not even here today, but we have had conversations too. And all of you, if you can honestly sit here after being here for as long as you have, I can't be the first parent that has stood here today and told you that we have a serious bullying issue in Waukesha schools. If you all don't see it, you don't need to be here. Thank you very much, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Gabriel McBride.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gabriel. I was in 7th grade this year. At the beginning of the year, I was at Les Paul Middle School, and, and I want to say about October, I started getting bullied because I was defenseless and the people thought it was okay. And March 29th, I was sexually assaulted, and they didn't really do anything about it. They suspended him, but he was supposed to be expelled. And so after he was expelled, I, well, suspended, I left, and April 16th, I started at Horning. And I have gotten word from my friends that still go to Les Paul that they're not safe there and they don't want to be there. And in my opinion, I think Christopher Carrabon and Cameron DeRoevery should be fired because Mr. Bennett was not let know of the situation of what happened. He thought I just got up and left. So I think it was May 15th, there's a group chat that I was added to from Les Paul, and they started bullying me. And my friends, our friend was at Horning. We were hanging out that day, and then we went to Buckner Park, and they set me up to get beat up. And now I have damage to my spine. I have scoliosis, and it's kind of sad because if you can't do your job right, why would you work for the school if you can't ensure that students are safe? That's really all I can say. I wasn't really that prepared, but thank you for hearing what I have to say. You guys have a nice rest of your evening.
Thank you, Gabriel. All right, we'll be moving on to our general business. The first item for our attention is minutes approval. We have minutes to approve for the June 8th regular board meeting, the June 8th executive session, and June 28th special meeting and work session with executive session.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Montiel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Zenobia. Any questions, corrections, or comments? Okay, seeing none, Sue, would you take the vote, please?
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have communications. Dr. Seibert, any communications?
None to report.
Okay, thank you. And then we have our Waukesha Education Foundation report. Mr. Borowski.
Yes, got a few things here. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. The Waukesha Education Foundation Board of Directors does not meet in July, so their next meeting will be on August 11th, a week after their normal meeting due to the golf outing fundraiser. The WEF Partners in Education reception was held in June, so thank you to everyone who came. The 16th Annual Golf Outing will take place on August 4th, and again, that's at the Ironwood Golf Club in Sussex. I know I mentioned this before. They can still accommodate a few golfers, and they still have a few sponsorships left. So email Lynette Calmidge or call 970-1143 if you're interested in either. The WEF Recognition Award nomination window is now closed. I had mentioned that the last couple of months. We received five award nominations, so that's good. Winners will be announced at the Evening for Education, which is planned for February 16th of 2023, so please save the date and put that on your calendars. It's going to be at the Marriott Waukesha. And again, this must-attend evening celebration for our staff, students, and community partners. A couple of reminders, the WEF is celebrating 20 years of supporting teachers and students in 2022. I know I've mentioned that before too, but they would love to secure 20 new annual sponsors if possible. That's a way for them to celebrate their 20-year anniversary by securing 20 new annual sponsors. So they're asking for your help in reaching that goal by sharing your contacts or making introduction. And I would just suggest, you know, we've all got professional networks, so just think about your network, maybe when you're driving to or from work or in the office or whatever it might be, and think about, is there any good connection that you might consider introducing to WEF? And again, these sponsorships can be an annual sponsorship or just one single event, so they might fit one or the other if you have a connection. To reach WEF or the WEF Office, again, please email Lynette@ExecDirector@WaukeshaEducationFoundation.org or again by phone 262-970-1143. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. The WEF Partners in Education reception was really wonderful. There were a lot of students there who were recipients of those scholarships, and it was really exciting to see. So grateful for all the work that's being done by WEF and their sponsors. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Clark, will you present the gifts report, please?
Yeah, we have three gifts this evening. Two of the gifts were from Generac Power Systems. They gave $750 to North High School for landscaping project and another $250 to West High School for freshman, for the freshman class. Wisconsin Society of Science Teachers donated $993.96 to the Horowitz Dreamer Planetarium for the extension of the planetarium lessons. Our thanks to all the donors and their generosity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark, and thank you to our donors as well. All right. Next, regarding the consent agenda, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. There were no expulsions this month. There were no policies or bylaws this month. At this time, if there are any other items in the consent agenda that anyone wishes to have set aside for separate consideration, please indicate at this time. Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Robertson, will you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Ms. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of 32 resignations, one leave of absence, and 27 new and continuing contracts. The information was provided in your packet. I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any further discussion? Okay, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Seibert.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. As we find ourselves here in the middle of the summer, I thought I would do some recognitions tonight, beginning with all of our staff who are teaching, supporting, and overseeing our robust summer school program here in the school district of Waukesha that wraps up at the end of the week, and we certainly want to thank them as well as all of our students that are participating and all of their parents that are shuttling them back and forth to all of those opportunities. I also want to recognize our principals and central office staff who are working consistently on interviewing and hiring so we're ready for kids and starting school in the fall. A big thank you to them. I want to recognize our custodial and maintenance staff. This is a very busy time of year for all of them, keeping up our grounds, getting our schools ready, and completing a number of capital improvement projects. So thank you to all of those men and women. And then lastly, I want to thank all of you as board members. It's been a very busy summer for all of you, and you've had many, many commitments, and we all recognize that you have families and that you have careers, but yet you commit to service to the school district of Waukesha to help move the district forward, and that is very meaningful to all of us here in the district. So for that, I thank all of you as well, and hope you enjoy the rest of the summer. Thank you, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. We also know this is a very busy time for both district and building administration who are working year-round, so we know everyone is eagerly getting ready for return to school in just a few weeks, several weeks, I guess. All right. Okay, moving on to our committee reports. Up first tonight is our Student Services Committee. Mr. McCaffrey.
Good morning, President. We have five items on the agenda this evening under discussing information. The first item is Family Staff Engagement Survey Presentation. Bill Foster from School Perceptions was at the meeting to share information with the board members about the survey sent to staff and families in March. Overall, 20% of surveys sent to families were answered, and 46% of staff surveys were responded to. His presentation included survey responses broken down by district and school. Bill shared that comments would be shared via comment theme analysis. Board members asked that if the full list of comments could be shared, not only the comment theme analysis. More information to come on this. Is there any questions related to this survey? Moving on to our second discussion information item, which was a Special Education Transition Update. Jason Gayhan, Director of Secondary Special Education, presented on adjustments to the Waukesha Transition Academy programming in the 2022-2023 school year. He was joined by WTA teachers Laura Edwards, Sarah Garver, and Teresa Mayer. They presented school and community-based opportunities for life, work, and higher education skill-building for our 18- to 21-year-old students. Engaging families and students with resources for post-WTA life are also integral into the program. Any discussion on that item?
Mr. Montiel.
I would just encourage members of the public, if they're interested in learning more about this program, to look at the video of that committee meeting. The presentation was excellent. This program is extremely important. I know Mr. McCaffrey's been involved in it for more than a decade, I believe. It's just such an important program. They do such good work, and they, I don't want to say they fly below the radar, but they do such a good job with such a unique population of our students that I think they deserve more attention. So if anybody's interested, or I guess I highly encourage you to look at the Student Services Committee video of that meeting and look into it. It's a great program.
Appreciate it. It is a fantastic program, and any board member that wants to go and visit it and go out with them, the invitation would be extended for sure.
They have bands now, so.
They do have bands now. They got a grant.
Yeah.
Anything else? All righty. Our next item is End-of-Year Student Discipline Data. Joe Cook, Deputy Superintendent, presented the discipline data from the 2021-2022 school year. Not a lot of discussion on that one, I'm sure. Not a lot of discussion on that one, I'm sure. All right, the next item is the Risk Ratio Review. Joe Cook, Deputy Superintendent, presented risk ratio data for the office discipline referral suspension and expulsion from the 2021-2022 school year. A discipline committee will be formed in August of 2022. Any questions on that? All right, our final item this evening is the School Safety Update Process. Joe Cook, Deputy Superintendent, gave background information about the school district's safety plans. He also presented the timeline for evaluating the 2021-2022 drills and procedures, collecting new environmental data, and finally, meeting with the Waukesha Police and Fire Departments to review. Future plans and proposed changes will be presented to the Student Services Committee at the August meeting. Mr. Montijo.
Mr. Montijo.
Thank you. I was very glad to receive that update from Dr. Cook. It was extremely well done. It ties directly into our executive session we had last week or the week prior. We can't talk about that, but I can tell you, I've been looking at this issue, as many of us have, and the administration has, of how we reflect on our school safety plan and how it was implemented with the incident that happened at South last year, about a year and a half ago. I have had asked for months and months and months to compile the tick-tock, the timeline as to what happened with that incident, how the school district's policies were implemented, who did what, who did when, and this had to wait a long time for that criminal case to conclude. I think maybe for the appeal process to be, the notice of appeal to be exhausted and not filed. And then the administration stayed on them, and they were on top of it the entire time. We had, I have received more information than I had hoped to receive. I have been assured that every policy that we have had in place has been addressed, and any concerns I had about matching up the policies and procedures in place developed by the administration and what actually happened on that day were alleviated. So I didn't want that moment to go by where we talk about these things for months and months, and all of a sudden it just kind of disappears. So I just wanted to state that, that I was impressed with the presentation, not only at the Student Services Committee, but also at the executive session. My questions were answered, and some. So thank you to administration for, and our employees and everybody, not only for what they did on that day, but what they've done since to make sure the policies were addressed and implemented properly. So, thank you.
Thank you. All righty. The next Student Services Committee meeting will be scheduled, is scheduled for Tuesday, July 19th, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom. And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. All right, moving on to the Human Resources and Compensation Committee, Mrs. Robertson.
Thank you, Madam President. We met tonight in the approval of the recommended candidate and the contract for the position of Assistant Principal of South High School. The administration is recommending Elizabeth Gould for the position of Assistant Principal of South High School. Mrs. Gould is, Ms. Gould is a bilingual professional with a variety of experience, including time in Waukesha and time in leadership. She is a listener with a nonjudgmental approach to problem solving. She is student-centered and focuses on building relationships with students, staff, and families. She is data-driven and has experience analyzing data, making changes, and seeing improvement in both, in both academies and student behavior. She is very excited to come back to Waukesha and join the South community. Ms. Gould is currently a principal, summer school director, and district director of curriculum for the Waterloo School District. She also serves as a regional coordinator for the Wisconsin Migrant Educational Program. Elizabeth has been a VP on Lake Country School District's Board of Education, and also has been a leader, teacher leader, in the School District of Waukesha. She has a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Carroll University, and a Master of Science in Cultural Foundations of Education from UW-Milwaukee. Her BA is in International Studies, Spanish, and Public Relations from UW-Whitewater. Elizabeth's resume and contract were provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mrs. President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Elizabeth Gould for the position of Assistant Principal of South High School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Sue?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Cory Montio.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Policy Committee Update. I'll turn it over to Mr. Montijo.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, there are no action items for the Policy Committee. There are two discussion slash information items. The Policy Committee met June 27th of this year at 7:00 AM, bright and early. At that meeting, there was one action item and one discussion item. The discussion item was related to the committee's structure itself of the Policy Committee. At the request of Dr. Piasik, there was a change in how, or suggested change in how the Policy Committee deals with certain specific policies coming to it, and distributing those policies out to other committees who are best suited to deal with that. I do want to commend Dr. Piasik on taking that action. I think it's extremely wise, and is not only efficient for our work, but it's efficient for the taxpayers and our constituents. So regarding committee structure, policy and work revisions will be distributed to the appropriate committees as follows. Bylaws, administration, operations, and relations will go to the Policy Committee, stay there. Issues regarding the program, the 2,000-series policies in the program, will stay, will go to Teaching and Learning Committee. 3,000 policies with professional staff, policies in the 4,000s regarding support staff will go to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, and policies in the 5,000-series will go to Student Services Committee. Policies in the 6,000-series regarding finance, and policies in the 7,000-series regarding property, will likely go to Finance and Facilities Committee. The Board President and the Policy Committee Chairperson have the authority to assign and move policies between committees, or directly to a full board for final approval. The action item taken at the June 27th meeting was regarding those policy, or pending policy revisions. The committee approved the distribution of several policy revisions to various committees, and these policies will be agendized at the respective committee in the next few months, as I mentioned. Policy 0144.5, Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct. Policy 8310, Public Records. Policy 9700, Relations with Non-School Affiliated Groups, will be with the Policy Committee itself. Policy 6108, Authorization to Make Electronic Fund Transfers. Policy 6146, Post-Ishwens Tax-Exempt Bond Compliance. Policy 7455, Accounting Systems for Capital Assets. Policy 8500, Food Services, will be addressed by the Finance and Facilities Committee. Policies 1421, 3121, 4121, Regarding Criminal History Record Check and Employee Self-Reporting Requirement, and Policy 8510, Regarding Wellness, will be with the Human Resources Committee. Policies 5113, Regarding Open Enrollment Program Inter-District. Policy 5215, Missing and Absent Children. Policy 5461, Children at Risk of Not Graduating from High School. And Policy 8450, Control of Casual Contact, Communicable Diseases, will be with the Student Services Committee. And I apologize, I'm almost done. Policy 2240, Regarding Controversial Issues in the Classroom. Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements, will be with the Teaching and Learning Committee. The next policy meeting has not been scheduled. We're waiting for the Neola update of the most recent release. It's the 31-2 update. And Madam President, that completes the Policy Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Montijo. Are there any questions or comments about the update that Mr. Montijo gave, or any of the changes to how we're triaging policies to committees? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda is the Finance and Facilities Update, which will be given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three action items and five discussion items on the agenda this evening. First action item is approval of CISA contract for the 2022-2023 school year. The committee was presented the renewal of the CISA contract for the 2022-2023 school year. CISA has provided the district with support in teaching and learning, special education, at-risk, Title I, and parent education for many years. Waukesha has been well-served by programs provided, and we look forward to continuing to participate in the cooperative effort. I move for approval of the CISA 1, 2022-2023 contract as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any questions or comments? Mr. Moore?
Yes, so I am the CISA liaison or advocate, and I had the chance to attend some of the conferences. Madam President has sent me to some of them, and they have been really helpful in terms of the support services that they offer. I also had the chance to meet different board members across different districts, and it's a good way to learn what districts are doing, what our, sorry, what our neighboring districts are doing, and how we can support students, support parents, and support students who are at risk in curriculum and instruction. So, so far, it has been a great service, so that has been my experience so far, but I want to reassure you all that I am new to them. So this is only the, I've only been with them for, since I got elected, so, and they have been wonderful so far. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other comments? All right, so we have a seconded motion. Sue, please, go ahead.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Cory Montio.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
All righty, my second action item for the evening is approval of the Southeast Wisconsin Schools Alliance Contract. The committee was presented the renewal of the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance Contract for the 2022-2023 school year, which provides legislative counsel regarding matters of mutual interest with other districts in our region. The committee approved the SWSA contract as presented, and I so move.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Sue?
Karen Robertson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. Zenobia.
I didn't get my hand up fast enough, I'm sorry. I do have one, one comment. I do respect what the Finance Committee, I believe, put this through for, zero of yesterday, or Monday, rather. I do recall one of the positions that the SWSA took last year, and it was during the, a lot of the conversation, not only here but around the country, regarding masks and COVID protocols. At that time, in April, I believe it was April 20th of '21, they put out guidance, I guess you would call it, to school districts, us being one of them, basically telling us to keep everything as is. And I, I appreciate that at the time, or maybe a year prior to that, that that was the prevailing wisdom. But over a course of a year, watching the students of this district and others go through quarantines, masking, isolation, to, at a time when the community was speaking about this issue rather loudly, their offering to us was to stay the course. And again, I respect what the committee's done and the votes on Monday, but I, I would not support this going forward. So that's really more a comment than a question. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zenobia. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we do have a seconded motion, Sue, go ahead.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Carrie, Cory Montio.
Nay.
Anthony Zenobia.
No.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes six two. Thank you.
All righty, my final action item of the evening is the approval of the String Academy Contract. The committee discussed the contract extension for the String Academy Contract for the 2022-2023 school year, which has an option of two one-year renewals. Under the agreement, the cost per student remains the same and includes a maximum amount of funding the district will provide. Administration will continue to review this agreement on an annual basis, including student participation levels to measure the viability of the program. The committee approved the 2022-2023 String Academy Contract, so no action is required by the board this evening. Any questions?
Thank you.
The String Academy Contract. All righty, moving on to discussion information items. Our first discussion information item is the Monthly Budget Report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget and all other funds as well. Our next discussion information item is the ESR update. The administration shared a trial balance of items that have been approved by the board. There have been no updates since last month. This report will be agendized on a monthly basis to keep the FNF Committee and the Board of Education on the utilization of the ESR funding. Questions on the ESR funding? All righty, our next item is the Budget Development. Potential tax levy scenarios for the 2022-2023 were presented. Next month, the committee will be asked to consider approving the preliminary budget in preparation for the budget hearing, which will be held in September. Final budget and levy approval will occur in October. Questions, discussion, moving on. Next item is Key Performance Indicators. The committee reviewed the existing key performance indicators for operations and finance. The committee then discussed possible KPIs for next year. On that?
I'm just, just one comment on the KPIs. I know all the groups have been talking about this, so we would be, each committee would be approving their KPIs in July, or, I'm sorry, August, and then bringing them, with the exception of Student Services, I guess we'll have to do July, right? And then bringing them all to the August board meeting for final approval.
Right, yeah, because our, yeah, our meeting would be after the board meeting, August.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, my final item this evening is the Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Project Plan. The committee discussed the scope of work and financing plan for Phase One of the HVAC Project Plan, which has an anticipated budget of $5.25 million. In August, the administration will seek approval of the Phase One design and engineering work. Once that design work is completed, the full cost of the upgrades will be determined via RFP process. Once final budget is known, the committee and board will be asked to approve the funding. Questions on the HVAC Project Plan? All righty. The next FNF Committee meeting is on August 8th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom, and Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Last but not least is the Teaching and Learning Committee, which will be presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held last night, right here in the boardroom. There are three action items and three discussion items to go over this evening. The first action item is the approval of the School District of Waukesha Educational Standards. The school board must annually include an item on the agenda at the first school board meeting of the school year that defines the student academic standards adopted by the board that will be in effect for the school year. Wisconsin State Statute 120.12 (13), as modified under the Wisconsin Act 55, requires student, requires school districts, rather, to notify the parents and guardians of students enrolled in the school district of the student academic standards that will be in effect for the school year. This information is located on the district's homepage, along with a detailed matrix under the TNL, our Teaching and Learning section of our website. On a vote of four zero, the TNL Committee approved the School District of Waukesha Educational Standards as presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Any questions or comments? All right, Sue, please.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia. Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Second is the approval of the updates, updates to Board Policy 2240, Controversial Issues in the Classroom. NEOLDA, the independent provider of our policy service here in the School District of Waukesha that partners with us, recommended some enhancements to this board policy. The committee members discussed it and the enhanced language in it and decided to bring this item back to TNL meeting for further discussion in August.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
The third action item is approval of the High School English Instructional Resources. During the 21-22 school year, three English Language Arts Curricular Resources were piloted. Upon completion of the piloting process, the instructional team recommended Study Sync for adoption in grades nine through 12. On a vote of four zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the Study Sync resource as presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any further discussion or questions about Study Sync? Mr. Moore?
Again, I have the chance to look over Study Sync for a couple of weeks now, and I just want to say that this is a very high, high-quality instructional tools for our students, which they deserve, and so, so that is my thought, is very high-quality. I was very, I was a big fan of the Scoping Sequence and the Facing Guide, and I think that is going to do well in terms of delivering results for students respectfully, so.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, Sue?
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
The three discussion information items that we have tonight, the first of which is the library book update. At my request, Ms. Landish provided an update on the common school funding and the status of the classroom library audit, along with an update on the purchasing processes and parent notifications for library books.
Any questions or comments about that? Mrs. Kozlowski?
Mr. Zanobia, I can't remember at the conclusion of the last meeting as to when it came to an update on the library books, whether or not we added another item to the agenda for what we are looking at as apps on the iPad and the review of how we're looking at that, but I think that it's something that we need to consider adding to our continuing discussion on not only books but the apps.
And that would, I'm sorry, that was, I know I requested at the end to look at specifically Overdrive and Sora, that app, as far as, but are, you're saying the additional, any additional apps?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the one that was in reference is Epic. I'm not, I'd have to take a look, but I, I think overall, one of the questions is, is all apps that our students are engaging, that they can pull off of their iPad to read books of any point, we should be looking at.
Sure. Just wanted to add a comment and not jump ahead of anyone. This process, as everyone knows, began, I believe, last summer, and I first want to say that the administration, Ms. Landish and her team, have done a lot of work to weed through where we are at, specifically on, on these three areas that we discussed at Teaching and Learning, but in general, the, the big picture of what is in our libraries, excuse me, and in what materials are age-appropriate. I believe that we've come pretty far in that process. I know next month, we are going to be discussing a few other areas, but I, I also believe that we are approaching a point that I feel that the board will be, will have enough information to possibly take action, and I would just request that, in the future, that this become an action item that we can, if need be, as a board, take action in this area, so. So moving on, the second discussion item is the social, social studies resources for grades six to 11. Last month, the committee was introduced to the Curricular Resource TCI, the resource that we will be recommending in support of the secondary social studies courses in grades six through eight, as well as 10th World History and 11th U.S. History. The presentation reviewed the results of the process of vetting these curricular materials, piloting those materials, collecting stakeholder feedback, conducting a neighboring district comparison, and a cost analysis. Requests for approval of this resource will be on the agenda for the August 2nd TNL meeting.
Any questions about the social studies materials? We have done two reviews so far with Teaching and Learning, so we're coming up to the point where that approval would be requested.
The third and final discussion item was the Key Performance Indicators, or Three-Year Targets. The committee reviewed and discussed the Teaching and Learning District Key Performance Indicators for the second time, and with feedback, removed the Advanced Placement KPI and added a third grade proficiency goal. All other areas remain the same. We look forward to approving the full set of KPIs in August. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held Tuesday, August 2nd at 6:00 in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanobia. All right, we're now at the part of the agenda where we can field recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items. I've made note of Mrs. Kozlowski's request to look at applications in addition to library and classroom books. Anything else? All right, with that, we do have a need for an executive session tonight. If someone would be willing, Mr. McCaffrey, thank you.
I move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.85, Parent I, Parent E, for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The potential sale of Oakdale Property Tax Keys WACC 1360198, WACC 1377002002, and WACC 1377003.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Montiel. Any further discussion? Okay.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
And Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Our next full board meeting is Wednesday, August 10th, 7:00 p.m. here in the boardroom, and that adjourns our open session. Thank you.
Okay, we are returned from closed session for possible action.
I move the approval of the contract for the sale of Oakdale Property Tax Keys WACC 1360198, WACC 1377002002, and WACC 1377003 as presented.
By Mr. McCaffrey. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Barowski. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Kozlowski.
All right, Carrie Kozlowski, aye. Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes seven zero. And that adjourns our meeting for this evening. Thank you.
I'm getting there.
Are we getting out of here today?
Okay.
Are we just getting out of here?
Fortnite?